Any questions to the council has for you. And we'll start off with Mr. Pimentel. Come on up.
Mine just shut.
My name's Dave Pimentel. I reside at forty-five Woodside Avenue, West Lockwood Island.
How you doing, Dave?
Good, yourself?
Good. One of the interests you have here is where the funds go and how they are handled. How would you keep a close eye on that? I know you have a vested interest.
Looking at the records. As far as, you know, what the town puts in and to make sure it's matched. Because I put in thirty years and after thirty years, the funds weren't there. We had to go back and give stuff up. You know, after working thirty years in the fire department. And it's just, I think by, you know, just watching it and making sure that the funds go in. Because it was funded, I think, it was like ninety-seven percent, I think, like fifteen years ago or something like that. And all of a sudden, bang, it's, there's hardly anything in it. Where did it go? You know, we put that money in so that when we retire, we can retire and have that, those funds there. You know what I mean? I retired, I've spent four years, and after two years, I had to come back and give up stuff. You know, which shouldn't have been, because I retired that I knew that I was going to get that when I retired. If I would have known that, I would have stayed and worked. And it wasn't just me, there was a lot of other guys that retired at the same time. And they would have stayed too if they would have known that. You know, and we never knew that. You know, and we took the hit. And, you know, by looking at the funds and making sure that everything goes in and that it's matched. And I don't know how it's done or who does it, but I just, you know, keep a close eye on it and make sure that the working guy that puts in all the years, that when he goes to retire, it's there for him.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, what kind of financial background do you have to be looking at the numbers? What would you bring to the pension board with your expertise on giving to hedge funds or giving to other funds? Where would you?
I don't, I don't have, I don't have a background of that, Angelo. You know what I mean? I really don't, I gotta be honest with you. You know, I ran, I ran a business for, you know, a lot of years. But the thing is, you know, to know how many, you know, I would have to look into it, you know, and check it and go from there and ask questions of who's been on the pension board. You know, I'm not just gonna come in and say bang, 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 I'm not gonna do that. I gotta find out, you know, how it works and where, I don't even know where it comes out of, you know what I mean? And how to look for it. It's questions I would ask.
Now, Dave, I know you and I have had conversations in the past about disability pensions and everything else. How would you handle a situation that you hear that a firefighter is coming in beyond, I mean, the pension board really doesn't have a say, it goes before the doctors, but how would you handle a case like that as far as, would you be able to deal with it knowing that a friend or a former coworker or whatever it may be that you're sitting here and you're making a decision on?
My thing is, I've been, like I said, I was a fireman for thirty years. When a person comes up to me and looks me in my eye and tells me that he's gonna go out in a fake pension and smiles about it and he gets it, it's not a good thing. It doesn't, that's not good for me or anybody else. You know what I mean? You know, I had another guy that come up to me and tell me right to my face that he used a certain situation in this town to get his pension. I'm like, really? I had a few words with him, but, you know, it is what it is. But it's not right. It's not right to the taxpayer and it's not right for the people that work next door, for the town. It's really not. Because these guys put in, I put, like I said, I put in thirty years, but I'm not the only one. I've had uncles that worked many, many years and I know a lot of other people. But the thing is, when these guys just come up to you and tell you that, it's not right. It's not right at all. You know, I know there was a company in town that, they had disabilities too. And you know what they told their workers? You guys are coming to work tomorrow. They go, we can't work. No, you're not gonna work. Just come in tomorrow. What they did, they put them in a room, they bought all recliners and they sat there for eight hours a day and watched some TV. He says after five, after five days, you put in your forty hours, you can go home. And they said, how many guys went back to work? You know what I mean? I, don't get me wrong, if the guy's, if the guy is disabled, he deserved the sixty-six and two-thirds that that person gets. I get seventy percent. Taxable. I live on it. These guys should be able to live on sixty-six and two-thirds, non-taxable. And their kids go to college for free. And when we used to get a raise, they would give a raise. They never lost. Those guys, I would, like I said, how many years I worked here, I've never, ever seen those guys on the disability ever lose a penny. Never. When we ever had to come to the town for a contract, we always gave up stuff. How come they never gave up? You know, it's, it's not fair. It's really not fair.
Anybody else have any questions for Dave? Brian?
Mr. Pimentel, let's say you're, you're on the board.
Yep.
You have an opinion about a matter that's before you.
Yep.
And you're very strong with that opinion. The president of the board has the polar opposite opinion.
Yep.
How do you handle a situation?
There's somebody on the board that's with me.
The chairman.
The chairman.
The chairman.
The chairman disagrees with you.
Just absolutely disagrees with you. You're...
I'm gonna stay with, I'm gonna stay with my decision.
Okay. How do you, how do you present that?
How do I present it? As far as I'm, you know, I'm, I'm gonna say, I have to have whatever's in front of me as far as the person that's going out on the disability of what his disability is. And, you know, as far as to look at it, you know, I'm gonna look at it where, if the guy deserves a disability, he deserves a disability.
It doesn't have to be disability. It could be, could be any matter that, that you just have polar opposite opinion from the chairman or someone else on the board.
I would have, I would have to hear what he had to say as far as what came in front of me. You know what I mean? I just can't say, you know, I'm gonna do this and do that when I don't have whatever's in front of me on a piece of paper or if he's telling me. That's all.
Can you remain objective in a situation like that?
Yeah, I could. Yeah.
I'll be honest, I've had through the years of being on the council, I've had a few conversations with Mr. Pimentel and he's always been, even though if he's heated or not, he's always been professional and courteous. That I will say. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Next, Jeff Coslin. How you doing, Jeff?
Good, how you doing? Good evening.
How are ya?
Jeff Coslin, two oh seven Lockwood Street.
Jeff, same question for you. Says you recently became invested, vested into the pension, would like to help with balancing and budgeting or other needs of the members. What, what do you think you can bring to the pension board?
Um, well, first of all, I'd like to say that, um, I don't have an agenda for applying for this position. I mean, I'm vested in the pension, like I, like I said. But I've, I've worked in this town for a while, so I have friends that are in fire and police and I know active retirees. But the reason that I applied for the position is because I have an interest in the long-term sustainability of the pension. Not so much in certain areas, but I'd like to see it be there when I retire.
You got the same question, Angelo?
Yeah, Jeff, same thing, same question. What financial background are you gonna bring to the pension board?
Um, financial background, apart from my own investments, I mean, I have a sharebuilder account, I know stocks, I know mutual funds, I know the lingo for the most part. Um, I don't really have a background in finance, but I am a fast learner, learner, excuse me.
Says here you were treasurer for...
Council ninety-four. Yeah, for a brief time I was treasurer.
Okay. What kind of funds did you handle and what did you have to do?
Um, checking account, savings account, basic bills, writing checks, simple, simple stuff.
What kind of monies did you deal with? What's the kind of numbers you talk?
Uh, it depends on the situation. I mean, we're not talking, you know, millions, but...
Okay.
For council ninety-four, it was enough.
Okay. I'll ask the same question to you. You and one of your fellow members who are on the board have absolute opposite opinions on a, on a matter. How do you handle that?
Um, facts, I guess. The person that has the, you know, the facts and, uh, you know, I don't plan on agreeing with everybody that I speak with. Um, I know that people have different opinions. But in the end, I would say that the facts put in front of you, what you have to work with is what you have to go by, whether you agree with it or not.
Okay, and do you see yourself as being objective, whether it's someone you know, don't know, or have no vested interest in?
Absolutely.
I can budge for Jeff, what a job he's done at the sewer plant. We weren't too happy when he first signed the bid. But, um, I tell ya, not because you're here, Jeff, you do a hell of a job there.
Appreciate it.
But my goal for this pension board to appoint is someone with some kind of financial background, knowing that the mess we're in. And, and I'll tell ya, I'm not for putting another member on where it's a conflict of interest.
I can understand that.
There's too many conflicts. We have, we've been that route before and I'm just giving you my opinion.
Okay.
But you do do a hell of a job and you give it a hundred percent on everything you do.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Jeff, what, Angelo just said conflict of interest. What, I mean, what's your, what's your opinion on that? When he says conflict of interest?
Well, I mean, there's, is there currently one active union member that's on the board now? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, there's nobody from the municipal side that's on the board now, so I don't foresee any conflicts. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I'm pretty objective to things, so.
Do you think it should be balanced? I mean, like if we, you know, if we put on, we've got a retired fireman here that wants to be on there, so there would be two, uh, people represent, not necessarily representing
Sure.
their unions, but, but have been part of the union or are part of the union.
Okay.
I mean, how do you feel about that?
Well, I can see how that would be difficult in a voting situation, but I can't speak for his qualification, so if, I mean, if he's very, very qualified to do the job, I would take that subjectively. Does that outweigh the potential for conflict of interest? You know, um, I do see a benefit in having a diverse board. Active, active members, retirees, different divisions. I mean, everybody has a stake in this pension. You know, from the taxpayer all the way to the person.
And that's usually the strongest argument, is that it's their pension.
Sure.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions for Jeff? Jeff, thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Al Haru, I saw him enter the room, there he is. Just state your name and address for the record.
Albert Haro, twenty-one Deborah Court.
How you doing tonight?
All right, you sir.
Al, it says, "I'd like to help with any issues that come up to get the pension system in a good shape and then to maintain and address changes as needed to keep the pension system where it should be." What, what do you think you can bring to the pension board?
The pension is kind of a bad egg for the town, so to speak. A lot of people think that it's a problem for the town. I'd like to try and change that perspective, make it self-present, self-sustaining so that the funds are invested properly. I'm not saying they're not properly now, but for a better method, look at the different places that can be invested and if we can find a better revenue, where it can be self-supporting than to do that.
Now, right now, your present employer is Rhode Island State Fire Marshal?
Yes, sir.
Angelo, you wanna ask us?
Yeah, what financial background do you bring to the board?
I own several pieces of property. I was self-employed, but at the same time, I worked for the fire department. I also worked with my father, run a plumbing and heating business for about twenty years. As far as a financial degree, I do not have that. But I manage my own affairs, have money in the bank. I haven't filed bankruptcy or anything like that. I keep up with the stocks and bonds and my own investments. And that's the nature of what I have.
The same question I asked these folks, you know, you and someone else on the board have absolutely differing opinions on a, on a matter. Opposite ends of the spectrum. How do you handle a situation like that?
I've learned over the years to respect the other person's opinion. If I feel my opinion is correct, I will state my reasons why. I will listen to the other person's opinions. We are still in America, so it is a majority vote. And if my vote wasn't the majority winner, then that's the way it is. That's what this country was founded on.
And I'm sure as a state fire marshal, you'll probably get into some of those conflicts on a daily basis.
I had that even when I was in the fire department. And when I went into fire prevention, one of the first problems I had was dealing with the public and we had a bad name. Nobody liked you coming in to do the code and force it, 'cause they saw you coming in and money going out the door. Took some time to convince the people. And what I've learned by watching them for the first month or so is that they didn't understand, they needed to be educated. So my goal was to explain things to them as I went along, not just walk in, do a bunch of, you know, inspection of everything and give them a report and they had no idea. I explained what was wrong and what the options were. 'Cause the people from NFPA at the time had taught me what the intent of the code was, not so much the letter of the code. Found out there was five or six ways to enforce the code. So I've used that methodology that those people shared and in my training through, with the town and then when I went to the state. I'm using it in other things. And in here, it would be the same thing. If we can find a way to make this pension more self-sustaining and do well, then that's what I'm looking to do.
Now, just, just for the record, you are a retired West Warwick firefighter?
Yes, sir.
And you are part of the pension plan?
Yes, sir.
So you do have a vested interest there also?
Yes, sir.
Angelo?
Al, the only thing, you can understand my point here. You worked in the system for thirty years, made a lot of friends, made a lot of enemies also. There's gonna be some really confidential information that's gonna pass through your hands. I don't feel comfortable in having people on the opposite side, even though you're, you're vested, working with someone for thirty years. You're more apt to lean towards their side because you've been there, you know what they've done for thirty years. And that's where I fear putting another union representative on this board, because let's face it, every taxpayer, I represent the taxpayers of this town, not only my ward. If there's a hit, people who own three, four, five, six, eight pieces of property gets hit eight times is hard. So if this pension don't work out and this town doesn't work out, this goes on the shoulders of the taxpayers. And I just don't feel comfortable, that's my opinion on, on another union official. I'm gonna be straight out with ya. I heard nothing but good things about ya. But my, my feeling is, and it'll always be, and it, it's been discussed with other constituents in town. I, that's just what I have to bring to this board tonight.
Well, I'll ask that, I'll ask that question. How do you think you'd handle a situation that comes across that could be affecting a friend, cowork, former coworker or whatever it may be?
I think my past record in the town with the various people I worked under, the different chiefs will explain that. But I understand exactly where you're coming from. That has been around a long time. All the, all the time that I've been here in the town, I've dealt with that. I was not a strong union person. I understood a lot of the things they did. I didn't always agree with everything that union did. And anybody that worked with me will tell you that. One of the first things that we did some years back was, we used to have a part of our contract, if you go down disability, that was it. We had one gentleman that was four plus, maybe almost five years on disability. And we decided that that wasn't a good thing. So we, in our contract negotiations, put a clause in there, brought it down to eighteen months, which I believe is still in there to this day. That way, at that point, the town had an option of pensioning this person off instead of just leaving them on a job injury for all this time. Because that wasn't a good thing. That's not what we wanted. And that's where I come from. If there's an issue with an individual, then I will speak my mind. There is some people that have collecting a pension that don't believe in collecting a pension. I know the exact facts of how they got their disability. They're bogus, okay? But that's water over the bridge and it was nothing I had anything to do with and nothing I can do about, okay? I put the chips where they come. If that's what comes in and I don't like what that's there, then I'm gonna speak my mind. Again, like I said before, I've been to a lot of meetings, this is a majority vote. If I lose, I can't say that I didn't try. And that's what I wanna do, is to put my best foot effort and give it a try.
Thank you. Nick?
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Just come up to the mic, please.
Sure, so... Identify yourself, please.
Nicholas Sneeze, chairman of the pension board. So I guess, just one thing that, I don't think this is gonna stay up, but... I apologize, but I think it's broken already.
We'll take it out of the pension. Just kidding.
No more administrative expenses. So one, one thing I did wanna just kind of mention, I know that, you know, obviously the financial expertise is a very important component. And while the pension board is, is still providing a very large oversight role when it comes to the investment, we did recently go through a pretty exhaustive process and included all the retiree coalitions along with the active union groups in bringing on a new consultant. We went away from the traditional consultant model whereby, you know, a recommendation was made and the board would say, "We like this, we don't like that, we like this, we don't like that." And we've moved towards an outsourced CIO model. And what the, part of the intent to that was that, you know, frankly, you know, there are some people on the pension board that have, you know, very sophisticated financial expertise and then there are people that have expertise in other areas. And while we do provide oversight now, the benefit to that model is it allows us to not get stuck in a cycle where every quarter, we're rebalancing at times, it might not be the right times to rebalance for the market. It takes some of the political views that people have with, you know, regarding either investing or, you know, different things out of it and it puts it in the hand of professionals. So that's one thing that I, that I did just kinda wanna impart to the council, because that shift from the traditional to the outsourced model is, is it different? And it's something that the town had back in the eighties and you're kinda seeing a bit of an upswing towards that and popularity in the industry right now. And I guess the, the one question that I'd have, just because, you know, I've seen some situations where it's come up is, you know, I know we've been talking a little bit about disabilities, but in many ways, we only have the record that's provided to us. So whatever is presented to that doctor or to those doctors with the IMEs, that's the record that we have to determine as a board.
No, I made that clear earlier.
Right, and one of the things that I, I get concerned with, because it's something that happened when I started on the board and I think we've gotten back towards making decisions in terms of what's within that actual record in front of us. But one of the things I get concerned about is, you know, within town, if, you know, people served with someone or, you know, people, people know somebody very well and, you know, bringing in things either for or against an individual, just, you know, based on either personalities or, or whatever it is, things that are kind of outside of that record. And we've really tried to prevent that. So I guess the question that I would have to some of the applicants tonight is, at what point, if you, you know, served with a particular individual or if you were involved with a particular collective bargaining unit, at what point would that person feel like it would be appropriate for them to recuse themselves from those specific decisions?
Thank you. So let me just clarify something, Nick, real quick. As far as you're concerned, you have plenty of people with the financial background and different expertise, kinda like what's up here? We don't, we all don't have the same background. You know, Ed's got the IT background, Angelo's got the business owner I background, I got the manager background. You know, Dave's got the educational background and Brian, he's got the managerial background also. So we have five different people up here as far as backgrounds go. You know, right now, I know yourself, the other gentleman, Lou.
Luisano's a CPA.
He's a CPA.
Lucy's a bookkeeper. And, you know, Dave Lemoine is showing great intelligence and understanding when it comes to the investment side, so...
But he really doesn't have a financial background, he's doing a good job on the board?
He is, he is.
Alright. Any other questions for Al? Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fonseca, Eddie, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you. My name is Edward Fonseca for Garfield Terrace. Excuse my voice.
Ed, you, you have to help the employees, retired employees to have their pensions, earn the best return for them, also to help explain exactly what is happening within the pension and to help cut the cost to the pension. So what can you bring to the pension?
Well, first of all, I've been doing my business over twenty-five years. I'm a member of the FINRA, which is the Financial Industry Regulatory Authority, which is a federal, part of the federal government. I have fiduciary responsibility to my clients. And what I mean by that, before I invest with any of my clients, I sit down with them, I get them a, I get them a little test, a quiz, and they tell me exactly, it tells me exactly the type of investor they are. Whether they're risky, whether they're low risk, how they feel about it, the market, how they feel about investing in certain areas. Plus, I'm also a, I'm a, what do you call it? I'm a principal license person, which means I oversee other brokers, other representatives. I have a securities license, I've had that for over twenty-five years. I have over five hundred clients I've helped with their portfolios. I've helped people with their 401Ks, IRAs, 457s, 403Bs, things of that nature. I have clients, my largest client has over, almost close to a million dollars just himself. And these are working people, okay? And also, I have the support of a lot of money managers, because I'm able to have conference calls with money managers from the different companies, like Lake Mason, Lincoln, Voya, AIG, companies of that nature. So I have, I have conference calls with them. Also, they come to my office when they come up, new stuff, and they come to my office and they sit down with me and we go over things. So I have, I have the access to a lot of financial people that are even better than I am. But I've been doing this a long time and I have a lot of clients. And again, I mean, we have a responsibility to let the people know exactly what's going on with their pension. I mean, my fiance was part of the pension. I mean, she's no longer part of it now, but we sat down, we looked at it, so I know part of it. But the thing is, it's for the people. These people work hard and they're gonna depend on this money when they retire. They don't want no surprises. So we're gonna know exactly where this money's being invested, how it's being invested, plus what the fees are. Because the state of Ohio has absorbed in their fees are, you know?
Eddie, speaking of your clients, one thing has been brought to my attention. How many of clients do you have that are West Warwick Town employees?
Town employees? Well, she's not in the pension anymore, none.
None?
None.
But how many are employees of the town? Just one?
None. When Rosie's employee, she's not a, she's an employee, but she's not part of the pension anymore.
Well, she's your client.
But she's still a client.
So you got one client?
One, okay.
You don't have a dozen?
No, just one.
You give her the right advice?
Absolutely.
I hope so, if you're gonna marry him.
When we sat down, she knows. That's not the only thing she has with me.
Go ahead, Angelo, you guys. I think you just said it, but...
What's your financial background in?
Well, my financial...
No, I mean, I already heard it.
You just heard it.
I'm licensed agent, all that.
I've, I've heard it. So you have a lot to bring to the board?
Absolutely.
You're not, if I call you for a question, you can answer me without going back to the You're not, if I call you for a question, you can answer me without going back to the board or Mr. Denise, where other people, I've asked questions and they couldn't answer me.
I'll be able to answer your questions.
Same question I've asked other folks. How do you handle a conflict between someone who has a differing opinion on the board that's polar opposite from yours?
Well, I would determine what is fact and what is truth. Look at it, observe it, go over it and explain, ask him why they feel the way they feel and then hit away why I feel the way I feel. And I feel as though I have the edge, having the financial background, having the licenses. I mean, I'm compliant, I mean, I mean, three years, I gotta go, I'm in total compliance with the government, with the state of Ohio and the federal government and all that. So I feel as though I'm gonna give my opinion, explain to them why I feel that way and then not just tell them, but actually show them where it would be better off this way here. But then again, if it's the other person's got a better idea and I look at it and I observe it, I digest it and don't make a hasty decision, then perhaps we can go the other way.
Eddie, what financial degrees do you have?
I have just, I don't, I don't, what I have is licenses. I have the investment license, I have the license for principal's license, which means I oversee other agents. I have the investment license, I have a Series Six, Series Twenty-Six, and a Series Sixty-Three. Plus, I'm very familiar with annuities, index annuities, variable annuities, mutual funds, municipal bonds, government bonds, all types of investments.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ed? Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did Darren ever come in yet? I didn't see him. And Mr. Murphy's not here, yet. So why don't we move on to the next agenda item? Cause I know they're here.
You told him seven o'clock?
No, the, the agenda, they have timeframes.
So if it was going fifteen, 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 we were, we're already into an hour.
Yeah, but again, it shows Darren to be here for 7:00 PM.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So, and Mr. Murphy said he'll be here shortly.
We just went through.
So what we'll do is we'll move on to the next agenda item, which should take us till probably about seven o'clock, hopefully less than that. And then hopefully they'll be here.
Two thousand and fifteen dash eighteen, first reading sponsored by Council President Goslin in ordinance amending section eleven point five dash seven jurisdiction of the West Waller Code of Ordinances.
I'll move the ordinance.
Moving second discussion, Fred.
So this is, we've been working to try to come up with ways to deal with the vacant buildings throughout town, the residential structures that have gone into disrepair, absent owners, sometimes they're banks. They're not taking care of the buildings, not taking care of the lawns, not doing what they need to do. In conversations we had with Attorney Dorsey, who had come in, you recognize him from the Lipit Mill project and some others in town here. He was able to tell us that they were doing work as receivers, doing work in Central Falls where they take the state law and local town ordinances and they go after all these owners of these delinquent buildings. And through the court process are able to get the properties out of their hands, sell them to people that will deal with them and put them back on the tax rolls and move on to the next one. They've been successful in Central Falls and they feel, they've looked over our complete list of problem properties and East Greenwich Avenue is top on their list.
You can do that one, John.
And, you know, and they feel they can be successful. The cost to do this is not, the town doesn't bear any expense with this. They get their money at the sale of the property and it's all...
Comes out of the banks or something like that.
Right. Through the transaction at the end, there's a, there's a sale that takes place and it covers their expenses.
They get a percentage?
I'll let John come up and explain the details, but ultimately, you know, as far as the town's concerned, we get these structures back on our tax roll and someone in there that will take care of them and move forward. Well, we have a book about that thick of properties that's been put together by the building office. So, and John has gone through the whole list with Carrie and Shayna. And basically, they're gonna be going through and prioritizing and taking the top ones and then moving forward.
I know we've even actively, as individuals, I know Dave Lombari, myself, we have, we see people who are buying and flipping houses and we, we've been showing other houses in that neighborhood to them, say, "Hey, why don't you look into this one?"
And they work directly with realtors to make sure that the properties get sold and moved on. So the ordinance essentially, before John speaks to it, is, is basically, it just, it's, it's something that we don't have in our code right now. It's a simple, it's adding a line to our existing code. But what it does is it gives them the teeth they need when they go to the courts that they already have the state law behind them and now there's the town ordinance that also backs that that says, "We have the authority to move in this direction and get these properties to where they need to be."
So, John, my understanding is if you do not collect from these, which I know you would, from, say, a bank, you're going after a bank, it's the biggest eyesore in town. And you come to every roadblock you can and nothing happens. You don't come back on the town for any money at all.
That's correct. And to the extent it's helpful for the council, try and give you the minute rundown on how the process works. It's, it can be supervised either by the municipal court or by the state superior court. Most municipalities have elected to do it within their own municipal court for a variety of reasons. It makes sense. The process is started by the town filing a petition with the court to appoint a receiver. The court then, if it's inclined, would appoint us. Once we're appointed, we send out notices to the owners of the properties, any of the mortgage holders, lien holders who have an interest in the property. And it falls under the State's Abandoned Properties Act and it's really a sword for the municipalities because what it does is it's, and the program's not meant to deal with every residential property. These are the vacant, abandoned, real problem properties. And the reason it's a sword is because when that notice goes out, at that point, the owners of the mortgage holders either have to step up and say, "Time out, I don't wanna do a receivership. I wanna abate the nuisances at the property." And if they do that, they have to give you a construction plan and actual proof of finances to finish it. And then the court would approve that abatement plan and the receiver would simply oversee it. Or if they don't do any of those things early on in the process, then the court authorizes the receiver to go out and find a third party who will step forward, do a purchase-sale agreement. Part of that purchase-sale agreement has milestones that they have to commit to in terms of the abatement plan, the finances to finish it. And if they don't live up to those milestones, there's reverts in the deed that would allow the property to go back to the receivership so you could have somebody else finish the abatement. So it's, it's really a sword for the towns because it brings an end to the process. You don't run into the cyclical process where you bring folks in every couple of months, they put patches on issues and you're dealing with them again in three or four months. And in terms of, the only investment really on the towns then is when you file the initial petition for receivership, but they're not, it's not significant. Once you have the process in place, it's the same as when you're sending out enforcement orders from...
To all the fines.
So, John, so the court would not get, I'm sorry, the court would not get involved if the town, so you...
The court would get involved because the town would file that petition for receivership with the court.
So why would the court appoint you?
It's up, it's entirely up to the court who they appoint. We've been appointed by other courts as receivers. The, when you file the petition for receivership, there's nothing that prevents the town from suggesting a receiver and the municipal court judge could either accept that recommendation or the court could appoint its own receiver.
It comes to municipal side. And we're the ones that benefit because we're the ones that collect the fines.
So why, so there's no, why is there not any kind of bidding process?
It doesn't fall under...
Don't cost nothing.
Well, they get a percentage that's not negotiable?
It's, it's not done by percentage. The way it works is we would track our time on an hourly basis and then at the end of the process, after the, after the sale is done, we would apply to the court to approve our time and our expenses and the court tells you if and what you get paid.
Like probate, whatever they get. They have a limit on what they can charge.
So again, in our case, who would actually appoint, John?
The municipal court judge.
Municipal court, okay. So... Bernero.
To Councilman Petula's question, if at the end of the day, say, we came up with two or three different ways to try and address the property and for some reason each of those hit a hurdle and the process didn't work for that property, it's not at the end of the process, the receiver can't turn to the town and say, "I'd like the town to pay me." It's the receiver takes the risk of that.
No, I understand. I just, I just don't want other lawyers that I may know come up and say, "Hey, how come we can get a shot at it?"
What happens if, you said, you said throughout the process, you know, notice goes out to all the deed lien holders? What happens if nobody responds at all and has no interest in it?
Then in that case, and that, that's happened in...
It's happened at all.
It's happened in quite a few cases where, where nobody responds or in fact, sometimes folks respond and say, "We're glad you wanna take on the issue, we don't wanna deal with it." The court would then authorize the receiver to go for it and that's when you would go out and find a third party buyer for the property.
Is the, is the, is there only one receiver for multiple properties? Or is there an opportunity for there to be multiple receivers for multiple properties?
There's...
Each property is, is a receiver appointed individually. It's not done in bulk. Like if we, if we have twenty petitions for twenty pieces of property, you could have potentially twenty attorneys.
It is up to the court. What we've suggested to the municipalities, we've spoke with and we'd make the same suggestion if the court were to inquire of us, at least to get the program started, it probably makes sense to do at least a pilot program where you have one person getting the program in place because with our experience with Central Falls, there's, you're gonna run into issues as you go through the program and you want a blueprint in place so that you can maneuver through those issues as you get into them. And if you have five different people doing it, you may have five different ideas, which...
Now, if the town took it over as a rece, as one of the creditors, we take over a piece of property, then you would charge the town.
If the town took over a piece of property, the, assuming that if the town took over a residential piece of property, that the town could ask the court to appoint a receiver. And in that case, it'd be a little bit different than the abandoned property set because that, the program that we're talking about is for abandoned properties where the owners have walked away. If the, if the town were, if the town owned a piece of property, you could do a receivership petition, whether that's to the municipal court.
Fred, you know what I'm trying to say. I, John, I figured John would know. We're trying to move in on the properties that the town owns, abandoned properties that no one wants a bid on. And we were trying to give it to neighbors that live next door.
The ones that didn't, they were signed because they didn't pick up a tax.
Yeah. So that's what I'm focusing on. Yeah, all right.
And at the end of the day, the...
Just let me clarify something. This isn't appointing his company. This is changing the ordinance to let gentlemen like other lawyers come in and be able to have the teeth to do this. That's what I, you know, like you said, Ed, you can appoint five lawyers to do this. But this, he's brought it to the town, the town manager, the town manager's had numerous conversations. So he's here just to answer any questions we may have. Right, no, thank you, John.
Tim Williamson also met with John.
You said that this was a utilization of state law, correct? How old is this state law? Is this new or is this just...
No, it's been around since the eighties. It just hasn't been used that much. It's been around since the eighties and the, I think the reason that it's gaining some interest from different municipalities is just because where the market is, it's a good time to try and deal with those properties because the right folks are looking at properties.
Essentially, we're in the aftermath of the two thousand seven, two thousand eight.
Yeah, and it's not that different than other receivership properties that we run into in the traditional receivership sense where buyers are looking at the property saying, "If I could deal with this environmental issue or if I had some time to fix the nuisance issues, I'd take it on." But they wanna understand that, you know, what those issues are and sort of have them in a box, which the process allows them to do.
Fred, you said that we had like a list of that of abandoned properties that we could potentially be filing receivership for? Yeah, could I, has anybody seen that list yet? You seen it? You see it? Okay. None of us have seen it. Can I get a copy? In digital form? I don't want, I don't want...
It's a lot of scanning.
I'll take a, I'll take a hard copy.
Save a tree, will you? Yeah? How come it's on digital form?
Because it was just, they went through and did all the inspections and they, they basically created a binder.
This is something to be cleaning up.
All violations, I mean, it's, it's a massive binder of various properties.
Yeah, remember, one house could be about forty pages thick too also. East Greenwich Avenue, East Greenwich, East Greenwich Ave has a file that's thick on its own. You know, so...
I'm just looking for the addresses, where they are.
Being honest, knowing our wards, what properties we're talking about. No, and again, that's, and that's why I said, like, we, I know we had somebody, actually a retired firefighter who does flipping houses now, was actually working on a house on Two Atwood Street, right down the street from Dave Lombari's. And, you know, he stopped to talk to him and said, "Hey, there's one around the corner over here if you wanna get a, you know, try to..." And, and we've actively done that throughout, like, we know houses that are abandoned in our neighborhoods roughly. And just by driving around, and I know I've actively talked to people who are flipping houses, "Hey, take a look at this house, take a look at that house." You know, unfortunately, it's because of the banks and all that too, that the banks are tying it up. Sometimes you can't always tell, you know, if they're abandoned or not.
There's some that you can't.
I know, because the one I'm pointing out, the windows are adjusted at least once a week. Yeah. But again, it's, it's a part of cleaning up West Waller, you know, getting the old abandoned houses on, you know, tax roll, getting them fixed up, getting them sold to flippers or whoever may be buying them. And let's say, the housing market has gone up five percent in the past year. They've, big thing today on CNBC, five percent, the market value's going up on houses. So the market's starting to do this again, slowly but surely. And, you know, there are some people out there who are looking to buy those seventy, eighty thousand dollar houses to make that hundred sixty, hundred eighty thousand after putting their forty or fifty into it. So, you know, I, I think, you know, Carrie can't do this alone, Pam can't do it alone, you know, so they do need assistance and whoever that may be.
And you sat down with Judge Bernero with that binder and he, he actually brought out the abandoned property act.
He, he's, he's talked to me about, and actually, Mary Ann...
Do something more aggressive like Central Falls.
Well, Mary Ann and Judge Bernero have had conversations with me. There actually have more people in here with housing violations now than they do with speed, moving violations and tickets and stuff like that. They actually spent a whole extra hour of municipal court just for the housing violations. So, you know, it's, it's, it's working, but they need a little more help to get things done.
I think what you'll see with the program too, our, our experience in Central Falls so far has been that after you go through some of them through the program too, you'll see people start doing work on the houses on their own.
Doing the hokey pokey.
I mean...
And that's hopefully the goal, I mean, we don't...
Sometimes people just need that fire.
As long as they fix them up and they're paying their bills, I mean, that's all that matters.
I think this is a good ordinance.
Yeah, I do too. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, Angelo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's the first reading.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John, thanks for the info. All right, now we're back to hit the right button, are you gonna close out?
No, trade that, that's good enough.
You know, this is supposed to close out everybody.
It don't.
Does it?
Yep.
It shuts you off.
All right, Darren Burley, I know he just entered the room. Hey Darren, come on up, just state your name and address for the record.
Darren Burley, ninety-four Lonzeale Street.
Hi Darren, how are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Good. It says here, "Give a brief explanation of interest in the position. Interesting in assuring the current pension plan remains sustainable." What can you bring to the Pension Board to help those matters?
Well, I think I have a pretty strong vested interest in making sure that this pension stays solvent. As an employee, you know, I've been here for almost eight years and consistently have watched my paychecks get smaller, my benefits decrease a little bit. Working longer now, paying more into a pension fund to get a little bit less at the end of the road, paying some of the highest pension contributions in the country. So I wanna make sure for future generations that we keep this thing together and keep it up and running. As a resident of the town and homeowner, every year my property taxes continue to go up, but they're not commensurate with an increase in value of my home. So in order to kind of get everything up to a good balance and keep in the right direction, I think we really need to make sure that this pension fund stays healthy because that's what got us into this position in the first place. So if the pension fund goes down, the town's gonna go down with it. So as an employee and a resident, I, I get it on both ends. So I wanna make sure that this thing stays strong.
Angelo, you have your question?
Yeah. What kind of financial background do you have to bring all them ideas you have to the Pension Board?
Well, I don't have any formal finance training. You know, I've been in public safety for almost twenty years. I've lived in a number of places throughout the country. I've worked for four different public safety agencies in three different states. I've been a member of both defined benefit and defined contribution plans, so I have a pretty good understanding of how all of that works. I've been a member of the executive board on the Fire Department, so I've sat in on the negotiation of contracts and I was still on the board at the time when we began all the pension change negotiations. So I've got a little bit as far as that side goes. I don't have any formal finance education. I do a bunch of, you know, investing on my own, which, you know, that doesn't really count for much, I guess, except for my own accounts, but no formal training, to answer your question.
Right. If you and another, if you and a fellow board member have clashing views on an issue, tell me how you'd handle something like that.
Well, I spent ten years as a cop. I'm pretty good at, you know, conflict resolution. I don't take anything personally. I try to get my point across. If I believe that I'm right, I will fight to get my point across, but I'll do it with tact. I try to take everybody's opinion into consideration, but at the same time, you know, I, I take everything in its totality, for my own opinion, but I will, I'll fight for what I think is right, but I also, I'm open to anybody else's ideas and opinions.
Darren, how long you been employed for the town of West Wall?
Uh, since May of '08, so going on eight years.
Going on eight years. So obviously you have friends...
So, obviously you have friends, coworkers, how would you handle situations, confidential situations that came before the pension board as far as, you know, it could be anything, it could be disability, it could be anything, but confidential information, how would you handle that?
Well, confidential is confidential, I, I don't discuss anything. I don't, I'm not a gossip guy, I'm not a rumor guy, I, I'm a pretty tight-lipped guy, I tend to be pretty quiet, and if you tell me something in confidence, I'm not discussing it with anybody else.
Any questions for Darren? Angelo, Ed?
Yeah, one question, you know, Angelo has mentioned, you know, conflict of interest and, you know, where you start to get on the board, too many union members.
Understandable.
And possible concern of that.
Absolutely.
What's, what's your opinion on that?
Well, if anybody thinks that I'm just gonna be a rubber stamp for the unions, you're mistaken. I think there's a number of reasons why this pension fund is in the shape that it's in, and one of those reasons is past abuses by union members. There's several others, but since we're discussing the union aspect of it. So, I'm more interested in making sure that the pension stays healthy than doing union members' favors. I think we need to keep everything fair, but I'm not gonna be a rubber stamp. When I was on the executive board with the fire department, I actually argued that I thought the criteria for certain types of pensions should be stricter. So, I'm a numbers guy, so I get the union aspect of it, but I'm not trying to get on this board to basically break out my rubber stamp and approve everything that the union wants because if you do that, obviously the pension fund isn't going to stay healthy. So, I try to look at the big picture of everything. We can't give everybody what they want. If we gave the council everything that you wanted, employees probably wouldn't have a pension. If we gave the employees everything that they wanted, the pension fund wouldn't have any money in it. So, we need to find a balance and union member are not, going back to what I said earlier, I believe in just doing what's right. So, if it's not what's right for the pension, then just because they're a union member doesn't mean that I'm gonna give it my approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And last but not least, Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy.
Gentlemen, Ms. Kelly.
Hello. Sean Murphy.
Sean Murphy, Forty Willen Drive, West Warwick. Sean, I'd like to be involved in securing... Can I read the chicken scratch?
Serve it.
No, it says, I currently served on boards in the community, I'd like to get back into the mix of things.
Let me see where they were. Isn't that great?
So, it's a no, not good.
So, Sean, what expertise would you bring to the pension board?
Basically, it'd be leadership. Currently, I don't do any work involving pensions at all, I'm an assistant clerk in Central Falls. I have served on the past in boards in the community and leadership and the ability to work well with others and be a team player and to get the job done at the end of the day.
Angelo?
Sean, what kind of financial background, expertise would you bring to this board?
Financial background, I have a graduate, a bachelor's science degree in financial management. I haven't used it yet in my career, but it is there and I do have knowledge of the field.
Sean, the question that I've been asking everyone, I've seen you in action when, you know, you have been on boards, what's your philosophy on handling clashes with another member on the board when you have differing opinions?
Well, first off, making a decision, you don't need to make a decision immediately on the spot, on point. You have to hear everybody's opinion. If I was an expert at pensions, I wouldn't say my answer's always the correct answer. You have to feel out both sides, see what's best for the community. Community in a whole is numero uno, that's what we have to go for. Clashes with people, I don't make my clashes public. If I have an argument with another member of the board, it's gonna be behind closed doors. As I present myself to the public with the team, it would be an accordal manner.
With that being said, about, and I haven't asked anybody else, but since your application came in today, how, how is it, are you being asked to be put on this board to be a rubber stamp for the non-union employees?
I'm not a rubber stamp for anybody. I'm a taxpayer in West Warwick, I have no background or any tie to any police, fire, or municipal union, taxpayer first. Of course, you gotta make any decision that affects the community with all people involved and have everybody's opinions and have everybody's hearts of the matter to make the answer and to make the question go forward, whatever it is with the pension situation, but I am not a rubber stamp for anybody at all.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sean?
And as you've known, on the school committee, I've gone against members of my own family. My mother was a teacher and at the end of the day, it's what's best for the community.
That must have been a great Thanksgiving, huh?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, right.
No carrots were thrown.
No, actually, we've gotten to work with you when you were on the school committee, I know it wasn't the best of times during those times, it was very trial, a lot of demands and a lot of going back and forth.
At the end of the day, we kept us stayed out and that was the biggest thing, you want West Warwick leadership within West Warwick and you don't need other people to come in and to tell you how to do things.
Any other questions for Sean? Thank you, Sean.
I would like to say one thing about the ordinance, I came in late on it, but in Central Falls, it's not just about collecting the money from these people when we find them for mismanaged properties. We get them in the municipal court, in the housing court, they come to the table, it's about fixing things up, fixing property up and making it...
Cleaning it up, yeah.
At the end of the day, one house sees another house doing it and we have a line out the door though on Tuesday.
It's a last resort, same thing.
This is gonna be strange coming from my mouth, but I remember Jim Thomas saying, curb appeal, walk out to your street, look at your house, look to the left, look to the right. And, you know, I kind of remember him saying that clear as day over here, I don't know if he got it from somebody else, but I remember that's one thing about him that he did say.
I think that this, this council, one of the things it will be known for, good things, is trying to be serious about cleaning up this town.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, thank you for your time.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, just want to thank all the candidates for coming out tonight, thank you all for taking the time to, to put an interest in the pension system and in the town of West Warwick. Obviously, we're only looking for one candidate at this time.